Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, please turn off your cell phones or other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. If you're planning on presenting testimony, please sign in the sheet in the back of the hearing room. Okay, today is Wednesday, the ninth day of August. The time is six o'clock. The time is set for our public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
Okay, thank you. First item on our business is some unfinished business. I guess we need to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we refuse, we remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, you heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now I understand there's been a request by the applicant to table this until the 13th of September. Is that correct, Richard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that is correct.
Okay, all right, I accept the motion to table this application until the 13th of September.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to table application number 202201624-S-VAC Engineering Solutions LLP to September 9th, 2023.
It should be the 13th.
13th. I'm sorry, September 13th, 2023.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, on favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up, I'll open the public hearing on application 202300565-V-CU-MSP Diamond Lawns LLC. Public hearing being opened, we'll first hear from our staff. Corey Branding, go ahead, Corey.
Chairman Commissioners, project 202300565-VCU-MSP is a conditional use and master site plan application for a contractor's yard and outdoor-only storage facility and a variance for site coverage and the reduction in required setbacks. The property is located at 3520 West Amity, near the 10 Mile and Amity intersection, consists of 8.24 acres in the rural urban transition district. There are two parts to the application, the first being the contractor's yard for the landscaping business. This is located on the southern portion of the property closest to Amity Road. The proposal includes utilizing the existing home as an office and the other existing structures for storage of equipment. The hours of operation would be from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. There are 32 parking spaces provided for employees and potential visitors. As conditioned, a contractor's yard in this zone is only approved for five years at a time or until annexed into the city. The northern portion of the site is proposed for an outdoor-only storage facility with 126 parking stalls. The hours of operation would be from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and the facility would be screened with solid cement panel fencing. The applicant has requested a waiver of the perimeter landscaping on the west and east property lines based on the vacant nature of the land adjacent to these property lines and the temporary approval of the use. A condition of approval was included to require an updated landscaping plan with landscaping on the northern property line as that is the closest active residential use. As conditioned, this use is also only approved for five years at a time or until annexed. There are two variances associated with the storage facility application. One is to allow the site to exceed the maximum site coverage of 20%. The storage facility itself is less than 20%, however, in combination with the existing structures that are to be used for the contractor's yard, it exceeds the overall maximum site coverage that is mentioned in our code. No new structures are being proposed with the application. Again, it's just those existing structures and the parking stalls that cause the excess of this 20%. The other variance is to allow the storage facility to be within 100 feet of residential property lines. The properties, again, to the east and west are currently vacant with no current development proposals that have been brought to Ada County. The drive aisle of the facility on the northern property line is within the 100-foot boundary. However, the actual parking stalls are outside of that 100 feet. And again, the facility is only approved for five years at a time or until annexed into the city. Staff does find that this application complies with Ada County code and recommends approval of the variance, conditional use, and master site plan. And I'll stand for any questions.
All right, are there any questions to our staff, Corey?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Was there any issue or request for the southern boundary going along Amity Road, or is that all in compliance?
Chairman Commissioner Davidson, the storage facility itself has unique setbacks. Contractor's yards comply with the standard setbacks of the zone, so that 100-foot setback isn't applicable there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for the staff? Okay, all right, well, thank you, Corey. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jake Gifford. I'm the owner of Diamond Lawns. Corey covered it. I just wanted to thank you guys for your time. Thank Corey and Ada County for working with them. They're always, they're always amazing to work with and very responsive. So I don't have anything to add. I think she got most of it.
Okay, are there any, anyone here in opposition? Okay, looks like we got somebody.
Mr. Chair, well, can you come back for questions before we, we forgot to ask you?
Oh, yeah, there'll be questions.
If you want to ask questions. So are you asking to change the landscaping plan, or is, are you concurring with what we have in the report now? It's a little unclear on that.
So I have a landscaping plan that complies with all the codes for the front of the property and the back of the property that borders the only residence. What I'm asking it for is on the sides to be able to do a screen fence and then have some time delayed to figure out what's going to happen with those properties before, because the one side's a corner that's probably going to be commercial. And then the code changes on how much landscaping has to happen. So right now, and then I have a, I'm also bordered by what is going to be like an Idaho power site. So what I'm asking is, is just to delay that where it's a five-year permit only, just to delay that, see what's going to happen with those empty properties before we go do this. It's like half a mile of landscaping. So that's, that's what I'm asking for, is just to reduce on those sides that are vacant anyways.
So are you, right now, the report does have requirements for landscaping, but you just want to do a covered fence? Is that what you're saying?
So a screen fence around the entire property and then the 16 points of landscaping on the front and on the back section that borders my, the only house that's actually next to me.
The house is the one on the north?
Is on the north, on the far back side, yeah.
Okay, so you just want the fencing, but then landscaping at the, at the north and, north and the south, or just the north?
The north and then the street side.
Should be the south.
The south, the complete opposite, the south side.
Okay.
So the west and the east side would still have a solid fence. I'm just asking to not have to do the 16 points of landscaping until we know what's going to happen with those properties and, and like what the future use of those properties is.
And then this application doesn't include a request to build any new structures?
It doesn't. No, it's all, it's just using all the existing structures.
And then the, the, the storage facility is essentially gravel lot?
Correct.
Or is, is gravel lot there already, or are you going to be installing it?
We'll be putting in gravel lot, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all I had for now.
All right, are there any other questions from the commission? All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, I don't show anybody that's signed up, but I guess you raised your hand, you wanted to speak. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Gary Warford, and my wife, Carleen, is here also. And I live at 4188 South Nickel Creek Place. I'm about 140 yards from my backyard looking south into the, this proposal for a use permit. And I've been gone for about a week and got back and then realized when the sign went up, what was going on. But I've watched this as the new owner took over. And it seemed like, you know, the landscape business, I'd heard that a landscaper had bought it and watched what was going on, because I, you know, in and out. But you can see the project from 10 Mile and also on Amity. And then when you turned to go north on Nickel Creek, you can see it plain as day. And it turned into a storage yard right off the bat. They started moving in trailers. And my concerns, the, this homeowner certification meeting, I wasn't, I never got a letter that's here. That, and the only one that seemed to show up was the neighbor that owns, the closest neighbor owns all the property down to, from, from the west side of 10 Mile to the south, to the south, to Amity, he owns that property there. So he's got skin in the game, and I'm, he's the only one registered that approved this project or signed up for it. But I'm a small businessman. I see where he's coming from. I'm a retired businessman. But the, the number one is none of my neighbors that I've talked to, and I've only talked about half of my neighborhood, nobody was informed or got a letter or anything. And I don't know on the south, the two adjoining neighborhoods, the one on the south side, there's 20 homes there and there's 16 in my neighborhood. And that's, and there's an independent one, I think he's got about five acres. So it's close to 40 homes impacted by this. And my concern is, you know, under a power, the power lines there, that's a high voltage line. I don't know what the power is, but if the drop over the, directly over the home is about 30 feet off the rooftop. And I know it was probably, this was grandfathered in and the line was built after the fact. But my concern is the induction of the EMF forces from those power lines and what they call radiation current, the discharges. And every piece of metal that you move in underneath or near it, the proximity of those lines is like adds to a giant capacitor. And the discharges is a major concern. I know he's moved in fuel tanks there, and not alone. I know Oklahoma City's very familiar with chemicals and fertilizers and that being stored. But I don't know if any environmental impact soils testing's been done before he's taken over. If he complies with, like I say, I'm, I'm a small businessman. I give him and his brother a lot of credit for building a business up. And as long as they comply and are good neighbors, I'm all for it. But, you know, off the get-go, none of the other neighbors that I know of have been invited to this, the meeting. So the storage, the problem with the storage is the biggest issue there. And there's no controls over what they move in, motorhomes, whatever. They all have fuel of some type, propane, diesel fuel, gasoline. And if a fire was not accidentally set by them, but natural, lightning strikes, and you're adding fuel underneath that power line and you, it's aluminum wire and it's hollow. And if heat, it's only 30 feet off the top of the roof, God forbid if anything caught fire and burnt the house down, the integrity of that power line, and I don't know where it comes from, which direction it's going, but I know it's high voltage. And so fuel storage, contamination, the environmental impact part of it. If there's been any soil tests and requirement afterwards, if it's approved or disapproved, you know, that's something yearly, because I have to on my, my environmental for my septic tank. I got to comply every year and pay to have that survey. So that's a concern. Mainly, that's the, the main points, but the safety and integrity with all that built in there. I don't know how, I'd hope power looks at this, you know, but to add new, something new that's going to add fuel to potential of a disaster, I don't know if I'd want my name put on anything. And I know there's plenty of storage down on that Meridian, the forefathers that built that Meridian out to Kuna were very smart. But I know they wanted to tar and feather them when Boeing didn't build a plant there. But now their plaques should go up and their names should be on plaques because they did a great job. So anyway, my time's up. I just asked that this be tabled if we can. And I want to survey my neighbors, two of them are out on business, one of them's for the state. And I'm speaking for most of who I've talked to, and like I say, I've only talked to half my neighborhood. So that's my request, and I thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you.
Are there any questions of the commission from you?
Sure, I'll have a few questions. Wondering if maybe staff could bring up the aerial view so we could get a better idea of where he lives exactly.
Yeah, I've got a map right here.
We've got it.
I believe he's north of the sector.
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost north. He's about a, it's 139 yards or 40 yards to the corner. I checked it with my handy-dandy rangefinder.
Are you north of, so across, the northern boundary of the red property, or the red line on the property line?
Yeah.
Are you north of that property on the other side?
Right on the edge of this map.
Okay.
Yeah, and all my neighbors that, two of them on each side of me are gone on business. And I know there's storage, the old eggplant that's on Meridian. There's lots of room there for storage and motorhomes, and they've got beautiful access inside and out. My neighbor that I did talk to that's two doors to the west, east of me, she almost got hit by some commercial vehicles. And she wasn't able to come, or she'd tell you her story about added traffic that's, and you got people pulling trailers in and out of there and, you know, just more and more, and that, that roundabout is, well, in two or three weeks of it, when I turned it open, there's been so many accidents and they put gravel in the easements there. So people running off the road, there was gravel there forever. Matter of fact, some of it's never been repaired. The curbing is still broken. And there was two accidents last week there that I know of. But I know the eggplant's got plenty of room down there. And I, I don't mind them trying to expand their business, their business meant. But I think this is a bad deal and potentially the hazards are tremendous. If something was to go wrong there naturally with lightning strikes and it go on all the fuel tanks that are there.
Right, you've stated that, but.
All right.
Yeah. Let me just ask a couple of questions. So let me, let me start with staff, and I'll just bring up the neighborhood notification issue. What is the, and this is for our staff, what's the radius and what information do we have that people within the radius were contacted?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll start, and then maybe Corey can add to Commissioners. So in this case, the subject property zone, rural urban transition, was, has a 300-foot radius requirement. The subdivision that, Mr. Warford?
Pardon?
Your last name's Warford?
Yes, Warford.
Yeah, Mr. Warford, the subdivision he's referring to is outside of that radius. So I wouldn't anticipate any of the residents in that neighborhood would have received notification. It's about 600 to 700 feet away from, from the boundary of this, this particular site. I don't know if Corey probably has a list in the staff report of the individuals or the property owners that were contacted. That's an exhibit in the staff report.
That's one, and he owns all the property adjoining.
Well, I guess.
Spinning the game, you know, hopefully it develops.
Well, I, I guess the point is, under the code as it stands, you were outside the radius of being required to be notified. So that's why you weren't notified, is that I guess he wasn't legally, legally required to. I suppose it does raise an issue of, you know, is that radius big enough for?
No, I can tell you that right now.
But as of right now, it sounds like he at least, well, he wasn't required to notify you because you were outside of the radius, so.
I understand that, okay. I didn't know. That settles that point. But you think we would have, because there's nothing there. I look at it every time I go out in my backyard. And like I say, from the very beginning, it looked like he just, you know, it wasn't only a store, you know, he's using it as a storage yard. And I was assuming Ada County was going to either ticket him or something to stop what was going on, and he was exceeding his business. I mean, this is added to his business, and he wants to make more money. I get that, but I, yeah.
Generally, Ada County doesn't go out looking to give tickets. It's based on if people see something and then they call in and then we investigate.
I'm a live and let live kind of guy, you know, and I.
I appreciate that.
People that are paid to do that would do, would, you know, do their jobs.
Let me talk to staff again to just address the issue of the power lines. So what does staff know about this power line, and is it meeting regulation? Is it grandfathered in? Where is it located?
It's right over the rooftop. It's 30 feet, less than 30 feet.
I'm asking the staff. I got your testimony.
Chairman Commissioners, I don't have anything to add specifically about the power line. The application was transmitted to Idaho Power, and they did not provide any comments on the application.
And then what do we have from, which, which fire department would be in charge of this area?
The Meridian Fire Department would be the agency. They did approve of the application. They do have requirements for some forms and applications that need to be submitted to them for the fuel tanks and the storage tanks that'll be on site. And that's required as a condition of approval.
Do we know if there are any fire hydrants or anything like that close by?
Chairman Commissioner Davidson, I am not currently aware of the location of the closest fire hydrant. The city of Meridian Fire Department generally, when responding, does look at that. But I don't know where that is closest located.
Could you state one more time, what is the fire, fire department requiring them to do to be signed off on?
Applications that are required for when there have like storage and fuel tanks on site that have to be submitted to them for review to make sure that they're in compliance with their requirements.
Okay, thank you. That's, I think that's all I had at the moment.
Mr., I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is a staff question as well. You do multiple, you, you have a sign on the, on the property as well as notification by mail, correct?
Chairman Commissioner Daly, there is notification by mail within 300 feet. There's a sign on the property, and it is also published in the Idaho Statesman.
And how long was the sign on the location?
The sign is required to be up 10 days prior to the hearing.
So even, well, this hearing, but it started back in April of 2023, correct? Based on, or what was the first, what was the first hearing, planning and zoning hearing?
Chairman Commissioner Daly, this is the first planning and zoning hearing. You might be referring to what we call a neighborhood meeting. That is required of the property owner prior to submitting an application. And that notification is also 300 feet. Something is mailed out to those property owners, inviting them to the neighborhood meeting so the applicant can explain what they're going to submit and answer any questions.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else here to testify? Okay, go ahead. Could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Brady Catheman. I'm at 4255 South Nickel Creek. Basically in the same place, just kind of down the street from where Gary was. I only had really three concerns, one that kind of came up as we were talking. One is addressed in the actual application, which I only figured out when I did my homework 15 minutes before the meeting, which is the standard. But if the, the fence is pretty good at blocking visibility, which was one of the things I was going to recommend. The other thing I noticed was the lighting is defined as just floodlighting with no, no screening or any kind of like a limitation on what's going to be illuminated. That area has been pretty dark in the past. It's pretty nice because you can see out over the valley and stuff like that. And that's my view, basically straight out of the front of my house. It'd be nice, like, I'm, I'm not concerned about like actually having lighting. That's an obvious requirement if you're going to have that much equipment and stuff out there. But it'd be really nice if there was some kind of restriction on just making sure it's not, you know, illuminating the sky, some kind of like dark sky. You know, basic limitations on that so it's not so visible from far away. And then the other, the other comment that I was going to make is that, even though I don't, I'm not really concerned about the landscaping on the east and west side, even though that's my direct view of the property, because just like they said, it's. even though that's my direct view of the the property, because just like they said, it's it's open field right now. It's basically weeds. But it would be nice if if there was, you know, commitment or something to just mow it down because that field has burned down in the past. And, you know, obviously, if it burns right up to the fence, that would be unfortunate. So if nothing else, that'd be the only only real concern that I, you know, bring up there. Basically, the lighting and the the fire control. I can also comment to the the fire hydrant. There's a fire hydrant directly on the corner of the the neighborhood that's across the street there where Nickel Creek meets Amity.
Okay, thank you. Any any questions for the?
I'll ask a question to staff. As far as overgrown weeds or anything like that, would that not just fall under our general code enforcement provisions, nuisance, general rules regarding, you know, yards and landscaping?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, that'd be correct. Yeah, code enforcement would check out weeds that would violate that county ordinances.
And again, just as a general comment, our code enforcement doesn't drive around looking for weeds. We generally work on a citizen complaint basis. And then as far as the lighting goes, is it it doesn't give any specifics on the lighting in the in the proposed report?
Chairman Commissioner Davidson, there actually is a condition of approval. The applicant will be required to submit an updated lighting plan that has the floodlights that are sensor activated and with full cutoff shields as required by Ada County Code.
Is that kind of what you were thinking of?
Yeah, that's perfect. I was thinking motion activation or some kind of shielding would be good, just so that it's not constantly illuminating, you know, 24/7.
Because if they're closed 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, I don't think they're going to need a lot of lights. So motion activated would probably be the way to go then. And that's so that's in our.
In our code, motion activating shielding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Okay, is there anyone else that needs to testify? Not we'll let the applicant, if you'd like to rebut anything, you're welcome to.
So I figured I better just address a couple of things that they had. The weeds in the fields, those are those are not my fields. Those are my neighbors. So I also have the same concern, but they're joining properties I don't have any control over them. The power lines are not my favorite thing. They're Idaho Power's main power lines. They go over the top. It's probably why nobody wanted to buy this property. I did have Idaho Power come out and double check their grounding, double check it because you can hear them. You can hear them buzzing, but they're giant main power lines. So I had Idaho Power come out and do a double check on it just for the safety of my employees. So I hear that concern and I understand it.
Mr. Chair, yeah. So are the power lines, do they look like they're hanging lower than they should be?
No, these are big, giant, main overhead lines that Idaho Power has put in years ago that just cut across like the very front of the property. They they literally go over the house. There's not even a pole on my property. It's like on each property line and it's spanning. I don't I don't know what they are, 150 feet in the air or something.
And so does that run parallel to Amity Road?
It's kind of diagonal, yeah.
And it goes?
From same direction as Amity Road, yeah.
And it goes over your house?
Correct.
Is that the only structure that they are directly over?
Yeah, well, the house and the shop are kind of right there, so they go over both of them.
Okay.
But they're they're a long ways up there. And I had Idaho Power come out and double check them just because I wanted to make sure the employees were safe with them.
What kind of fire sprinklers, fire suppression do you have on the property?
So on the property I'm taking care of, it's we keep it all trimmed down. So and most of it's gravel anyways. And then we're carrying an extra 3,000 gallons of water in a tank on site for the fire department to use.
Does the house have a sprinkler system?
The house does have a sprinkler system, yes.
You're going to be living on the property?
I'm not, I'm not.
Is is anybody going to be living in the house while the business is?
No, just the business.
So it'll just be a business?
Correct. And the storage is just during daylight hours. So I I'm actually not planning on adding any additional lighting. So the lighting that is there currently is the lighting that we're looking to get approved with adding sensors and some shields.
You understand people like the dark sky, your your cognizant of that.
And there's no reason for us to light it up, so.
Okay, if if you have anything else, go ahead.
I think that's it. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any questions of of Corey before we close the hearing? Nope. If not, I'll close the public hearing on application 2023-00565-VCU-MSP Diamond Lawns. The issue is before the board for consideration. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I can I'll make a motion and then we can discuss. I'm going to move to approve application number 202300565-V-CU-MSP Diamond Lawns LLC. And I think with with that, I'm willing to grant the request to just have a covered fence as opposed to a landscaping plan on the the east and the west. I think those were the that was the sort of only outstanding issue. So that's my motion.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion and just some comments. One is it's a five it's only a five year condition and it's going to be reviewed within five years. That's the first thing. So any of these issues that may come up, I think the questions of lighting, the fire hydrant, the water on the property. I think the major issues, safety in terms of Idaho Power has reviewed it for safety purposes as far as the electrical line. I think the major issues that have been raised tonight have been addressed, and so I would second the motion.
All right. The motion is moved and seconded to approve the application 2023-00565. The question is, this is not to be reviewed in five years. A whole new application will need to be handled, correct? It's not just a just a staff level review.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's correct.
Yeah, so just just to clarify that, that's it's not a review in five years. It's all new application.
Right, right, reviewed and replied.
It'll be reviewed, of course, without start over again in essence. Okay, so you've heard the motion then with the findings of fact and conclusions of law. I call for the question on favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay. The next item up before the commission is I'll open the public hearing on application 2023-00225-ZC-DAV-CU-MSP Urban Solutions LLC. Connor is going to our staff is going to give us a a report. And then we'll we'll hear from the applicant. Go ahead, Connor.
Thank you, Chairman Beck, Commissioners, application 2023-00225-ZC-DA-V-MSP. That is before you. We got applicant is Urban Solutions LLC. Vicinity map here just showing the property we're talking about. It's off of Chindon Boulevard, just west of Highway 16. So this is a zoning ordinance map amendment and development agreement to rezone the property from the RUT district to the C2 or the Community Commercial District alongside of variance to request relief from setbacks and a master site plan for a self-service storage facility. Property is addressed at 7015 West Chindon Boulevard, contains 8.83 acres. So applicant proposes to operate this facility, which will include 10 storage buildings consisting of approximately 359 total units. And this is based on their their submittal that got a recommended approval on by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Units will range in size from smallest at 10 feet in width by 10 feet in depth to the largest at 12 feet in width by 30 feet in depth. In addition, there will be two covered parking buildings here in the in the middle. They'll be constructed to allow for 96 total covered parking spaces. Each space will be 12 feet in width by 40 feet in depth. The property will also include an office building here in the southwest corner, 725 square feet. And that will be right by the the main entrance there, which you see is the the red arrow. There's four parking spaces that are proposed and drive aisles are included throughout the site. As I mentioned, that that main entrance there is off of a proposed collector roadway that the Highway District proposes in their their master plan that will run north south, coming south from Chindon Boulevard. So that new entrance would be there. And then there will be an emergency access entrance to Chindon Road on the northeast corner of the property. And that will be a gated access that's only for emergency purposes. Hours of operation for the site are proposed to be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM all days of the year. But there was a natural features analysis that was required as part of this application. It did not show that, you know, this use would be a significant detriment to the natural features of the site. There was a parking plan that was included for that office as well that meets the the code requirements. There was also a landscaping plan that was submitted, I believe. Let's see if I go through here. The landscaping plan that was provided that does meet the the point totals. But there will be a lighting plan that is a deferred submittal that will need to be provided as a condition of approval if they plan to have any outdoor lights. Let's see if I go back to the site plan here. As I mentioned, there's a variance that's included to encroach into the side yard setback here on the eastern property line. They plan to build right up against the property line. It is a 20 foot setback that is required there because it abuts a residential property, a zone residential property. So the applicant is proposing that variance. Staff does find that this variance would would be a special rider privilege if it was approved. It also does not relieve an undue hardship due to the characteristics of the site. So that's how staff sees it. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, they they were not reviewing the variance. They just reviewed the rezone in the master site plan. So you would decide on the variance tonight. So in conjunction with that master site plan, we and the variance, we have that rezone that I talked I was talking about. So currently, the site is zoned as RUT. It's all that area in blue. They plan to rezone to the C2 or Community Commercial Districts. The property is within Meridian's area of city impact and it'd be their future land use map that we review. That's adopted by Ada County. It does designate the site as a mixed use interchange, which states that uses are to be compatible with the impacts of a freeway interchange and are not intended for high volume uses such as retail. As I mentioned, that Highway 16 runs north south. If you recall, it's going to go further south all the way to I-84. So as the proposed use for a self-service storage facility will generate 108 vehicle trips per day with 19 trips in the PMP hour. It is not a high volume traffic generator. And as such, the zoning designation of C2 is compatible with the comprehensive plan. However, the mixed use interchange also states that future uses should be planned to integrate with a frontage-backage road type circulation that would run on the southern boundary going east west. So because of that proposed road type, the self-service storage facility would not be in compliance with that proposed roadway by the City of Meridian's comp plan. And therefore, it is not compatible with the future land use map for the City of Meridian. Ada County Planning and Zoning Commission, they did recommend approval on this project as they felt that the City of Meridian's request for the site to remain available for the highest and best use is not a good reason to deny the project. They also felt that the applicant addressed the commission's concerns and questions regarding access to the site and providing that a landscaping plan. Let's see here. So if I go forward, there are some agency comments here from the City of Meridian. I'm going to include their most recent comments here. They were just from a couple of days ago. Oh, they're all on the back table. Well, I don't know if you want to grab them. Yeah, anyways, the City of Meridian, as you saw in their previous comments, that they are recommending that we deny this project. They have concerns regarding that frontage and backage road that they would like to see along the the southern property line that would run east to west. It would provide access to all these properties so they don't have to access Chindon Boulevard. And that's one of their main concerns. Talked about how the the facility is proposed to be walled off. It wouldn't be able to have that access to and from. Thank you. So I'll provide this to you. This was provided by the City of Meridian on August 4th. This will be exhibit number 50 for the record. That exhibit is from the City of Meridian, exhibit 50. It's just a reiteration of what they've said in their their previous letters, how they're recommend denial of the project. Let's see here. So that that was the City of Meridian. As I stated, there's been different reiterations of the site plan. This site plan, if you want to, yeah, thank you. This site plan here is what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on. So it's it shows that new entrance there down in the southwest corner. The applicant has since then provided a a new and most recent site plan that they would like to see where they have moved the the most northern storage buildings closer to Chindon Boulevard. ITD is is against this request. The applicant can talk about this whole situation, but essentially, they got some information. The ITD told them that they thought that they could move the the storage buildings closer than what was in the previous plan. As you can see here, there's this more of a significant setback there for right of way dedication. The applicant is now proposing those storage buildings move be moved closer. With that, there's the updated landscape plan that shows that, you know, lesser setback there. With that, staff is continuing to recommend denial on this project. P and Z Commission is recommending approval, and I will stand for any questions.
All right, are there any questions of Connor?
Could you go back to the agency comments? I don't know if we covered those all. Do you want to summarize those for us?
Chairman Beck, Commissioner Davidson, yeah. So as I stated, their main concern is that frontage and backage road, as as I mentioned, a road that would run east to west. Each of those properties are supposed to, based on their future land use map, take access off of that roadway as opposed to Chindon Boulevard. They also, in their original letter, stated that this is not the highest and best use for the property. Planning and Zoning Commission had some thoughts and concerns with that language. They mentioned how let's see here, that there's some issues with the water and sewer districts. So this property, even though it's within Meridian's impact area, it's not within Meridian's within their water district. So there was some currents they had concerns they have about just availability of water and sewer to the site and being able to have adequate fire flows, I I guess, and.
Are they is are they concerned with not having the water now or not having the water in the future when they want to put lines through there?
More so in the future. It is within. More so in the future. It, it is within Star's, or it's outside of Star's water district service boundary. So I guess that's their main concern is that in the future, sewer and water to the site will be difficult. I don't know, Leon, if you want to elaborate on that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, there is a representative from the City of Meridian who's in attendance tonight. I believe they're planning on testifying, and these questions may be better posed to them.
Sure. Better posed to him. All right. Good enough.
I was, I was unaware, so that's great.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of our staff?
Do you know what the other sort of buildings are and the surrounding lots and what, what's going on there now?
Yeah. So Chairman Beck, Commissioner Davidson, that was one of the requests by the applicant for this variance is that, you know, they, they stated that there's no other residential uses around this property or, or any uses proposed or any applications at this time. There, it's a pretty vacant area. There was some sort of residential building that has since been removed, I believe. It's not being used as a residence. So yeah, as of now, it's just agricultural fields at this time to the west, south, and east. There was some comments provided by the owner of the property that surrounds this to the east and the south that they would like to see those setbacks retained. They have some concerns there with the buildings being built right up against the property line. So yeah, hopefully that answers your questions.
And then to the north, it looks like mostly vacant fields with maybe one, one or two houses that are way to the north of the lots?
Yeah. Commissioner Davidson, as of now, this area that you kind of see is brown. This is the City of Star, so I'm not sure what the current, you know, what's currently proposed there, but, but that is within the city limits. I would assume that there'll be development there moving forward. But yeah, the, the other properties here, there's, as of now, they're just more residential in nature, fairly large lots.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Where is the City of Star? Where's the, the, not just the area of impact, but the actual City of Star for the, in relation to this property?
Yes. So Chairman Beck, the City of Star city limits is just across the street here. There's, there's this little square here that is in Ada County, but if you go to the west or to the north, that is the city limits of Star. As for their...
So it's not just the area of impact. It's actually in the City of, City of Star?
Well, no. So this property is outside of Star's impact area. It's within Meridian's impact area, but...
I don't mean that, but I mean the, the property you're showing there.
Correct. Yeah.
That's actually, it's not their area, Star's area of impact, but it's actually the City of Star.
No, it's in Meridian's area of city impact, but it's closest to the City of Star.
Where's the City of Star? Where's the boundaries of Star?
The City of Star, can you see my cursor here?
Yeah.
So that's, that's the closest boundary. So this would be in the city limits of Star.
Okay. Well, that was my question. That is the City of Star?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Okay. We're, we're not communicating.
All good.
All right. Because that's, and, and, and the site is actually in the area of impact of Meridian.
Meridian, correct. Yeah. Chindon Boulevard acts as the, the boundary, I believe, for those impact areas.
How far is the City of Meridian from, from this site?
If you see in pink here, that's City of Meridian. So it's...
Couple of miles.
Yeah, just on the other side of Highway, Highway 16.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't have any further questions. Listen, does, do you have any questions or anybody else? Okay. Well, well, thank you, Connor.
Yep.
Okay. Is the applicant here who would like to speak? Oh, go ahead. Good. Could you give us your name for the record and stuff?
Good evening. Darcy Hart, P.O. Box 1304 Eagle.
And you are the owner of the property or you represent?
I am an owner-operator. Yes, sir.
Owner-operator.
Operating partner.
All right. You're, what was your name again?
Darcy Hart.
Darcy. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight. Appreciate the opportunity. The application before you today is an eight-acre parcel located on Highway 2026. I know Connor's gone through the, the high level. We've received initial comment letters from the agencies involved, and we've had multiple pre-application meetings with both Ada County and City of Meridian staff. Slide two, please. This exhibit comes from the Idaho Transportation Department's website regarding the Highway 16 expansion. It shows the relation of the parcel under application tonight in relation to the current highway buildout taking place. Slide three. The mixed-use interchange overlay surrounds the Highway 16, 2026 area and favors low-traffic proposals with mixed-use and light industrial commercial uses. The parcel is abutted to the south with medium-density residential. This parcel is quite literally the furthest parcel from the Highway 16 interchange with the mixed-use interchange overlay. The site plan is, I think we're going to need to go to four. Yep, there it is. The site plan is in compliance with connectivity needs and allows for future circulation based on ACHD's requirement of the partial buildout of a collector road along the western perimeter. I'd also like to note that there is an additional access road planned much closer to Highway 16 that runs parallel to this collector road called Awaihe Storm Avenue, and I'll cover that further in my presentation. The site plan has been revised to allow for the signalizing of the residential collector road. We've pushed the main entrance back to the south in compliance with the ACHD site-specific conditions. This was a topic of the Planning and Zoning hearing, and this site plan reflects what was requested. There is a concrete V-ditch that runs along the southern boundary, and the proposed site plan allows for long-term access and maintenance. We're seeking relief from the setback requirement along the eastern boundary line and any additional setback of what is proposed along the southern boundary itself. We will also work with the Idaho Transportation Department regarding the Highway 2026 frontage and their extremely, unfortunately, late comment letter, but now we have a new planner assigned as of about four days ago. While the letter from ITD arrived just a few short days ago, we will coordinate with them and come to some resolution based on their initial comments. I would like to note that we have been in communication with three members of the Idaho Transportation Department staff regarding any site plan conditions or any comment they have, and we finally got something from them. It is, I believe, right at the top of your packet regarding the 2026 expansion that they're planning. Let's go to slide five, please. Thank you. These are just a few exhibits showing our proposed elevation and design. Six is great. Please, Connor. We did take comments in pre-application meeting with Meridian and county staff, and we integrated them into our overall look. We broke up the elevation to include parapets mimicking storefrontage at staff's request. Materials and elevation submitted match similarly built and approved facilities within a few miles of this location. We are proposing an onsite well-inseptic to support the office and the fire requirements. We are actually in the Star Fire District. Districts of Fire and, and city tend to not match up. So we have met with, with their staff and received their comment letters as well for fire suppression needs and safety. And we do look forward to our eventual rezone into the City of Meridian when the time comes. Slide seven, please. I'd like to address what I call the elephant in the room. Staff comment letters from Long Range Planner Caleb Hood. I believe he is in the room tonight. At least that's what we're told. We did meet with City of Meridian staff on two occasions prior to meeting with county staff. We have not received any direct communication from the City of Meridian. One of the first sentences in the staff letter on March of 2023 references highest and best use. We found this phrase to be intentionally vague to allow subjective decisions at pre-application. We find that it stunts private property owners' capabilities to develop their own land, even if the proposal meets the county zoning code and the Meridian comprehensive plan. The letter issued by staff, we find it to be nothing short of personal bias and example of government overreach. The burden placed on this application is of concern because the denial request is out of the jurisdiction of the City of Meridian. There are no frontage requirements or cross-access required of the comprehensive plan. This parcel is eight acres and would be eaten almost completely up if we were required to put across Chindon connectivity and connectivity along the south. We would be left with almost nothing. Circulation and connectivity requirements are also the domain of the Ada County Highway District and the Idaho Transportation Department, and we intend to work closely with them to be in compliance with what we all find to be the needs of the site. The sole purpose of the collector road is to allow for access away from Highway 26 and for future development of the surrounding area. And we're happy to receive additional design comments or feedback, but we have not had anything specific other than what is in these letters tonight. Slide nine, please. There's a couple of quotes. This is slide nine. There's a couple of quotes from the Meridian staff letter from May of 2023 that this application is harmful to the city's vision. It produce, it is a product that consumes acreage intended for jobs. It is not job-based. The use in this location is unlikely to ever be ideal. These comments lead me to believe that staff aren't in support of any application whatsoever. It doesn't fit in with future development. The subject walls off adjacent development while also restricts access, except we are creating connectivity with a partial collector road buildout. The letter is a complete 180 from our previous letter, and now the focus is on employment goals for the city. My one acre, or excuse me, my eight-acre parcel with one application now bears the burden of employment for this entire field sub-area within this long-term City of Meridian. Storage is a service and a much-needed business model. This parcel is set to be surrounded by medium-density housing to the south. During our discussions with the City of Meridian, at no point in time has an employment center been discussed prior to this letter. But we can't have a high-traffic count either, and we're supposed to be mixed-use, and it seems the intent is to deter growth completely. And being a small local owner-operator with no staff, it seems to me that I'm now being targeted with any and all argument to achieve denial of my application. It seems that they just simply don't like storage facilities. The arguments being made are examples of government overreach and an attempt to put a pause button on growth. Self-storage facilities comply with commercial zoning, and this application requests a C2 zone to comply with mixed-use overlay the city has in place. This application is also in compliance with Ada County zoning code. Excuse me. Chairman Birch, in the Ada County P&amp;Z April hearing noted, prior to our unanimous approval, cities think something really great could go in here. We don't know what it is, but it's something great. Slide 10, please. Might be off one letter. There it is. The Meridian Field Subarea Plan Exhibits, and the vision is mixed-use commercial in this particular area, but it can't compete with small-scale neighborhood services and commercial at the core. Next slide, please. This is the mixed-use center exhibit noting our application location is that black dot up there as a regional center. This is where we note the Awaihe Storm Avenue buildout, which is a, a larger collector road that will add connectivity from, gosh, looks like U-Stick, all the way out to Highway 2026. So the black dot is, is our parcel, and there will be a residential collector road on the west. And then we've got another connection between our location and Highway 16 that takes a to and through, which is a much larger collector road that's already in place that will be dragged all the way to the north to meet Highway 2026. So there is a fair amount of connectivity being planned already outside of our location in addition.
Which one's the Awaihe Storm? Where you, where you mentioned that, which, which road is that?
So you see the pink box of the regional center? Awaihe Storm is there. So we're on the other side of that regional center area. So it dawned on me while I was looking through the field sub-area plan that there is more connectivity planned, and the burden of connectivity is not just placed on our collector road. There is far more planned in addition to Highway 2026 that allows businesses to access off of Highway 2026. We don't have any frontage, and that's a good thing. So there, there is already plans that are outside of, of our purview for connectivity on 2026.
So right now, your, your plans are for access off of, off of the Awaihe Storm Road?
Our plans are to build a collector road on our western boundary line.
Well, there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've got that requirement of ACHD, and it is planned to have a signal. So what we did was we moved our office entrance back. Connor, if you wouldn't mind going up to the site plan, I believe that's on slide four. I have a lot of slide. Four, please. Yep. So what we did was because there will be a signal on the western boundary collector there, we're required to move our office back about 440 feet to comply with large trucks coming in and out. The original comment, when we first started our due diligence period in building our site plan, was that it would be right-in, right-out. That was ITD's comment. And then ACHD said, well, no, we're putting a signal in, so you've got to move your office back, which is why we came to planning and zoning a second time with a new drawing to allow for the entrance and large vehicles to come to and through.
The signal will be on, on Chindon Boulevard there?
Yes, sir. According to ACHD. This collector road has yet to be named. I don't know if I am lucky enough to get to name that street. Awaihe Storm is to the west. Gosh, what is it? It might be half a mile or a mile to the west of us. So the reason I bring that up is because connectivity has been such a hot topic with this application.
Well, the Highway District does not get to, to get to call where on Chindon Boulevard because that's a state highway. So they can't decide there's going to be a stoplight there?
My understanding from ACHD's staff letter is that there is a, a light planned down the road. We don't know when that timeframe is. According to our planner with ACHD, they mandated our office be moved back in anticipation of that in the future.
Do you know anything about a stoplight plan?
Chairman Beck, yeah, that is planned based on the Highway District.
But, but not the state, not ITD? Because the Highway District doesn't decide where, when stoplights are going to be.
ITD has been...
On state, on state property.
Chairman Beck, ITD has been a little challenging for us in the last nine months. We're on our second planner. I have reached out to Justin Pond with Right-of-Way multiple times, and I was passed on to another contact with District Three. They gave me one version of what they think is appropriate. I talked to Connor. We changed the site plan based on these emails, and now we've got a new planner as of four days ago with other information that is still to be determined. It's pretty gray right now, but we definitely intend to work with our newly-assigned planner and certainly want to be in compliance with what is appropriate.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yep. With that, I'll stand for any other questions.
Any questions from the applicant?
What's going to be there prior to the stoplight? A stop sign or just a turn lane?
That would be up to the ITD planner. The original comment was right-in, right-out only, which we were prepared for at this point. There would be nothing until it's installed, which we're not in charge of, and I'm thankful for that, of course. But we have just received ITD's planning letter for the second time, and it's different than the first planning letter. And that came in August 4th, I believe, just a few short days ago. So it is still on the list to reach out and, and find out some more substantial and quantifiable information. The letter was still fairly gray, that they are still to be determined on the frontage.
Now, has the City of Meridian given you any, any indication of what they would like you to build there?
No, sir. What we know is that we were supposed to have low-traffic impacts, which we do. We're supposed to be light industrial commercial, which storage kind of falls into both. We're a single-story. We, we do meet the comprehensive plan's definition. If we put in a drive-through, I'm sure they wouldn't be happy with that because that's too much traffic. The latest comment is we're supposed to be an employer. I'm an owner-operator. I'm a, pretty much a one-woman show. So we feel that the target gets moved. We had two meetings with staff. They were very gracious, but, but mixed reviews all around. And it's been frustrating and challenging. And it's been frustrating and challenging, which is why we're here today.
So you don't know if they're expecting a shopping center or something like that there?
Well, the field sub-area, if you wouldn't mind, Connor. Slide 10. That exhibit is... The shopping centers, when you look at the region itself, Canada, Eustick, it's a little hard to see, the print is so small. But there are other areas that are supposed to be more foot-traffic, neighborhood commercial areas. And that region with our parcel is not supposed to compete with that type of commercial. So at this point, we feel like we're bringing something that is appropriate for that location. And it's a buffer from the residential that is proposed on the south that will eventually come. And we know that we are due our hearings tonight, and we insist on that because we want to hear from you folks.
What does regional center mean to you?
Regional center, gosh, it'd mean a few things. But the original plan, we came with zoning and the mixed-use interchange. Those were the big ones, because we knew that those would be things, if we didn't comply with those, this wouldn't really matter. So if we were in compliance with the mixed-use interchange overlay with low traffic and a buffer and the Collector Road and the signal coming, mixed-use regional center, there's a mixed-use interchange, and then there's a regional center. To me, a regional center might mean a big box store, but that would be more traffic. So it doesn't seem like there's a lot of winning options for that location. But we don't have those answers from the city at this point.
Do you have previous experience in the self-storage industry?
Yes, sir.
What's your experience?
Well, a couple of facilities that are doing just fine. This parcel was specifically purchased, and the due diligence was done, and the feasibility was done in advance of this application, knowing good and well what was coming.
Are your other facilities in Ada County?
No, sir.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Beck, I'd like to add the applicant's presentation as exhibit number 51 to the record.
Okay. Thank you. We have a couple of people have signed up. Caleb Hood. Good evening, Caleb.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Caleb Hood. I work for the city of Meridian. I'm the Planning Division Manager, 33 East Broadway Avenue. It's in Meridian, 83642. I did check the box of neutral on this application. I'm sorry for the confusion in the three letters and the multiple correspondences with Connor and your staff have been great to work with. I will apologize for my role in not contacting the applicant, although we have a lot of stuff going on in Meridian, so I'm not contacting Ada County's applicants all that often. My contact information is in the letter, so I guess the phone can go both ways, but I did not reach out to them. I don't believe I've ever talked to Ms. Hart. So again, I apologize for that. I wish maybe we could have tackled some of this outside of this forum, but we are where we are. So I thought it'd be better for me to be here today in person and just kind of explain where we're at. We are not opposed to this project. It is marginally consistent with the comprehensive plan. Maybe I'll just paraphrase it that way. Storage units, I do not have any personal vendetta against storage units. I think they can work. We do have some policies in the comprehensive plan that aren't called out in the staff report, and I do, again, appreciate the staff report. In these mixed-use areas, even a smaller 8-, 9-, 10-acre parcel, we are looking for multiple uses on a site. That's the mixed-use part of mixed-use interchange. But we could live with, and we didn't really highlight that in our staff report, that in the comprehensive plan, it says in all mixed-use areas, at least three different land use types are expected with a variance of type for smaller project sites. Again, I'm not going to dwell on that. We think this could work. The major issue, and it's already come up, is that east-west collector. Appreciate the applicant designing in Oaihe Storm Drive to the north. Maybe it'll have another name. I don't know, I'm not on the Street Naming Committee. But that is appreciated, the north-south, but we really need the east-west. Again, State Highway 16 is coming, and the interchange is going to be right there. So you have another letter from the adjacent property owner. I'll let them talk about some of that. But really, the interconnectivity for vehicles is key and critical out here. City limits are quickly approaching. Coal Valley, so the GIS map that you saw earlier, Coal Valley was just approved for their new campus here by city council a couple of months ago. Probably doesn't show just yet, because it probably hasn't been through the state, but that ordinance is done and annexed into the city. So city limits are less than a half-mile away from this property at this point and coming quickly. So 2026 is the other big thing. I have three minutes, there's a lot to cover. But the right-of-way on 2026 is the other major concern and the changes since planning and zoning. We need to preserve for that corridor. Six-lane facility in the future. You know, widen four lanes. Construction continues to go on there. They'll add two more in the future with the interchange. That's probably one, that's the second biggest concern, is preservation, so we can make sure that our ultimate transportation network can function appropriately out here. So not supportive of the variance and the setbacks, particularly to Chindon and the connectivity. So I got five seconds, so that's a good place for me to just wrap up, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, thank you, Caleb. Is there any questions from the commission?
Sure, Mr. Chair. I mean, just for clarity, can you kind of summarize? Like, again, what exactly is it Meridian is asking for here?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, I appreciate the question. The main request is that east-west on the south boundary, an east-west drive aisle, public street, it could be anything, but we need to get access back over to the east to connect all those properties, basically, the parcels that you can see on this map, because they're at the footprint of an interchange. So everybody, the idea is that everybody there feeds back out to this north-south Collector roadway that they're building half-plus-12 of. So that's the idea, and the number-one request is that the south boundary to have some connectivity connection through this property. So again, that circulation network can be... And there's another exhibit you had. I'll just say also, it answers the question still, too, but I'm not going to dwell too much on the Fields Area Plan. I've actually been talking with your staff recently. You guys technically haven't adopted that yet. We adopted that in 2021, or late 2020, I can't remember now. But we haven't been back to the county to have you actually officially adopt that. So the policies and the land uses and that aren't on your books and a part of our Title IX agreement, but we're working through that process. But the roadway network is essentially the same today in our adopted comprehensive plan as it is in the 2019 version that you do officially endorse.
And so, I mean, are you saying you want them to leave room for a road going east and west, or you want them to build a road?
So that comes back to the, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that comes back to the, I don't necessarily have an issue with storage uses, but for, there isn't connectivity shown. So I'm not here to design it for them necessarily, but any land use, we would expect, yes, a roadway stubbing through generally near or at their south boundary, some preservation even. I know, again, the property owner to the south is here this evening, so maybe a better question for them, if they could work something out. But generally, at the eighth mile south of Chindon is where we expect an east-west frontage-backage-type roadway to be constructed.
And then, any idea of what the estimated date for this entire area to sort of be developed in the way Meridian wants? It looks like it could be quite a while.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Mr. Davidson, I wish I had that crystal ball. I mentioned, you know, Coal Valley is moving forward with their master plan for their campus, so city limits are rapidly approaching. With State Highway 16, when that opens up, you know, but who knows? There's a lot of things going on in the world, right? Interest rates and labor and materials and things like that. But we are rapidly growing towards star. So our communities are growing together. And again, State Highway 16, in my opinion, is going to do nothing but accelerate that growth in this area. We have the master plan, that Fields District Area Plan that was referenced earlier. And so we are excited about the potential in this area and really, again, not opposed to the project with some redesign. So it sets the stage for the rest of this area to develop over the next decade or so, 15, 20 years probably before we're fully built out. But it's coming rapidly.
So what kind of redesign? Because you do not oppose the project with some redesign. What does that mean?
So, Mr. Chair, again, not to be repetitive, but redesign could simply be the office, instead of that row, basically, of storage units, being a drive aisle that connects down and over with cross-access to that adjacent property owner, so that can continue on further to the east. Those properties, again, we aren't going to approve, and ITD does have this jurisdiction, but the city also has code. There will be no more access points on the Chindon. Emergency access notwithstanding. But there will be no more access points on Chindon but for the Collector roadway that this applicant is proposing. And we need to get people over to that Collector so that that's, that they can use it, and they'll have to go all the way down to McMillan to get out and up and back up to the 2026 Chindon.
And that's why, could you put the map thing back up there again? All right. And so you were running your cursor back and forth. Is that where you're proposing the road to be?
Roughly, Mr. Chair, yes. Roughly an eighth mile south of Chindon, which is their southern property boundary.
Right.
Yes.
And do these other property owners agree? They'd have to have some easements as well, would they not?
So, Mr. Chair, another good follow-up. And again, I believe the, I don't have the sign-up sheet, but I believe the applicant is ready to testify. Maybe a better question for them. I can only speak from the city's perspective. We do anticipate...
So, but if there's going to be a road between there, there's going to only be a portion of it.
Has to connect to something.
Has to connect all the way up to the 16, right? And so that would require these other property owners to sell an easement or something.
No, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, and I don't have a pointer. That parallel-backage road to Chindon would actually loop kind of like you're showing on the Fields Area Plan. There will be no connections to State Highway 16.
Right.
That's a freeway, and it won't connect back up to Chindon either.
You see where his cursor is right there, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So take his cursor, go along, and go back east. That right there, do those property owners, are they in agreement to the road?
So, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that clarification. Most of those properties are ITD properties, but for, I think, one. So ITD, that's right-of-way for the interchange and 2026 State Highway 16 storm drain areas for interchange. So Connor can verify that, but when I looked at them, I think four out of the five are owned by ITD.
Yeah, I believe you're correct. Those little guys there, this, I don't think this one's ITD, if I recall.
Yeah, the big one there.
Yeah, the big one.
So maybe to more directly answer your question then, that one property owner, or two, or the few that are there, will be subject to the same policies of the city of Meridian Comprehensive Plan and will not be able to take access anywhere else. That's why I'm so passionate about this, and this needs to be here. They can't have an access to the state highway. It's at the throat of an interchange.
So my question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So my question is, why does it have to be the northern property owners and not the southern property owners that provide that right-of-way access?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, good question. And again, it was, it's shown to some degree in our Fields Area Plan, and the applicant mentioned it. We anticipate a lot of interconnectivity. So not just one road that connects these projects, but multiple. So we aren't overburdening any one roadway. So there are, at roughly the eighth mile, a roadway network planned where there's regular interconnectivity. So it will be both the north and the south, not one or the other.
But the people on the south are going to be providing more traffic into the connectability than the people on the north?
Mr. Chair, I don't know that.
Well, if it's going to be developed, I mean, the way that it's proposed to be developed, at least the current site, they're going to, their traffic is minimal compared to what's going to come from the south in terms of that Theders Road. That's my point.
Mr. Chairman, potentially. I will say, you know, light residential is also one of the sample uses in our mixed-use interchange land use. So I don't know exactly how that's going to develop. That's why I guess I'm not trying to push back or argue necessarily, but I really don't know what type of land uses. And that's why, again, some of the concern with how this is laid out is it really is going to set the tone for how the rest of it can even develop to the south.
Do you'd say storage facilities would not be compatible with residential?
Mr. Chairman, no, I wouldn't make that statement. I think they can be, and they're ancillary and supportive of residential when they're not walled off and there's appropriate landscaping and setbacks.
Okay. All right. Well, any other questions from the...
Is the property to the south of the site and to the east of the site, is that all owned by the same person, or are those multiple?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would have Connor just verify, but I do believe the, is it M5? Something, the 5B, I guess, is their, the property owner does have a large land holding to the south and to the east.
And is any idea what the future use of that is going to be? Do they have any plans?
Chairman Beck, Commissioner Davidson, they're the ones that submitted exhibit number 48. They have some concerns with the setback encroachment and so forth. I'm not sure if they're here tonight, but yeah, exhibit number 48. So they touched on it in their comments.
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
So you indicated Coal Valley Christian is, where are they in all of that? That you, that city of Meridian's already just approved?
I don't know if that's for your staff or myself, I can...
Anybody who can answer.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Daly, so they're just, you can see the northern part of their parcel just on the screen. So if you, the purple line, yep, right there, that's their property. And that is city limits. And in fact, I think you can even see it cross-hatched a little bit. It got cropped, so you can only see just the very top of it, but you can see that that line work there is actually representing that that's the city of Meridian. So we are not that far away.
Okay. All right, all right. Well, any other questions? All right, well, we thank you. Thank you, Caleb, for coming out. Okay, we have Emily Mugler. Did I get your name correct?
Yes, thanks, Chairman, Emily Mueller.
Oh, Mueller, okay.
Yes. With 5B Holdings, 839 South Bridgeway Place. Before I start, I did have a request from the other property owner, also to the west, to read a letter that was, they sent in, but couldn't make it into the packet. Connor, can I, I think that you have those. I also have physical copies. But I have a lot to cover, too, so I want to get going. Again, thank you so much. I'm here tonight on behalf of 5B Holdings. That entity owns the property to the east and to the south, as well as to read this letter from the property to the west. I did submit the letter that is in your packet as the exhibit just referenced. And there's a number of things that I want to talk about. But first is the request for the variance. And I think that's another main reason that we request that this application be denied. As detailed in my letter, we don't believe that the applicant has demonstrated or proposed any sort of hardship, and the requirement is undue hardship due to the characteristics of the site. This is a regularly-shaped eight-acre parcel. That really doesn't have any hardship that would be imposed.
So it's a conditional use permit that you oppose?
The variance.
The variance, yeah.
And the entire application. But to touch on the variance, in my letter, you can see that, yeah, there's no landscape, that 20-foot buffer for any proposed residential use is absent, and that is of significant concern. The other thing is the frontage road, and we can discuss that more. And I did promise the neighbor to the west that I would read his letter, too, so I don't want to miss that. But the frontage road would be a natural fit in that area as we were looking at that map to connect to our property and the other properties to the west, to the east. And I would just say that 5B would comply with all connectivity requirements of the city of Meridian when they annex. They desire to annex into the city, as it will soon be contiguous. So what I will do now is read the letter from Mr. Mike Hutter, who represents the property to the west as well. Please accept this letter. Please accept this letter. Into the, in opposition to the above-referenced application, I represent the estate of Peter Barta, which estate owns that certain 80-acre property commonly known as 7835 West Chindon. The Barta property is adjacent to the 7015 Chindon, to the subject property's west, as shown in that figure. I'm submitting this letter to voice my concerns with the application and to request the Board of County Commissioners deny the application. I am in opposition to the application because it fails to meet setback, landscape, and architectural design standards that will apply to surrounding properties that develop in the City of Meridian in accordance with the City of Meridian Comprehensive Plan. Applicant's property has over 700 foot of frontage along Chindon and 500 feet of frontage along the to-be-constructed mid-mile collector. As shown, the proposed architecture elevations show a majority of metal facade with little to no modulation. And I believe this will be entered into the, the record there, too. So, you can just see that the, the actual renderings and elevation are concerned, are of a concern for Mr. Hutter. So, I did my diligence in getting that in for him.
You, you, well.
Go ahead.
We could probably extend your time a little, but you can finish that letter.
Okay, thank you. So, just the, the remaining sentences there. Inadequate setbacks and landscaping will further reduce the aesthetic appeal of this gateway area and harm future development. I am concerned that approval of this application will have a detrimental impact on the development of the Barta property and remainder of the field subarea. I request the Board deny this application. Thank you for your consideration of these comments. Sincerely, Mike Hutter. So, with that, I will stand for questions. You have my, my letter and our concerns.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have questions for Emily, Ms. Mueller?
I guess I, I would ask, so how do they feel that the self-storage would hurt their aesthetic appeal or the development of their projects?
Chairman, Commissioner, yes, thank you. I think that, and I'll speak for 5B, not for Mr. Hutter. I'll let his letter speak for itself. But I think that, you know, we have been very involved. I've been involved in that, that field subarea planning process and additional architectural requirements. So, what I will say is that I think the main concern is with landscaping setback and architectural requirements, that this really doesn't serve any of those that will be the, the kind of cornerstone to this whole area. And, and so those are the main concerns from the property owner.
Little, little vague, maybe.
Vague with, with regarding to, sorry.
Well, your, your, your statement. Maybe you could just help me understand it better, be more specific.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to do that. The owner's primary concern is really not much different from what Mr. Hood discussed earlier, which are the front, a frontage road and landscaping and setbacks and overall architectural standards.
They think it's going to be ugly?
Yes, yes. I, I, I think, I think that that is the general concern. Again, if you look at the, the renderings, just kind of 700 feet, almost 700 feet of what looks like corrugated metal. And in an area that is designed to have higher standards and knowing that all the properties around are going to annex into the City of Meridian with an anticipation of those standards is the concern.
Do you feel that architectural revisions could accomplish what you're looking for? Or do you just feel the very nature of self-storage is anti-ethical of what they're trying to propose?
I believe that it, it could be a possibility, but at this point, I think there's so, there's been so many things that we would still request denial tonight and would be open to a conversation with the applicant to discuss some of those things. And I think that the storage use, I, I guess I can't speak to that specifically, but I do think that this area is, is, the way that we envision it generally would have a mix of uses, kind of as Mr. Hood said, and that a single, large storage use, I, yeah, I'll say that the owner would oppose that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, I guess the, my, my question is, I guess, a reiteration of what Commissioner Davidson just said. So, the crux of your dispute is architectural, just the, the basic use. You don't like the, how they're, they're proposing to use the property.
Chairman, Commissioner, thank you for that question. Yes, I think that the, yes, the setbacks, right? There's no landscaping along any boundary. What, what I will say, and, and sorry to digress a little bit here, is that 5B Holdings initially submitted a letter when this first went to the Board saying, "We're not opposed to this application, but there are a number of things, such as landscaping, such as the ITD setback and other roadways, that we really want to see happen, and none of those things have happened." And so it has become more of an overall opposition to the, to the site, to the, to proposed use.
So, this is for our staff. So, what are the, the requirements for variance? There are the, the variance requirements. What are the requirements that third in the variance?
Commissioner Beck, or, sorry, Chairman Beck, Commissioner Daly, if, if I understand your questions, you're asking like what the actual setbacks.
In, in addressing her issues.
Yeah, so along the eastern property boundary, there, it's required to have a 20-foot setback because there's a residentially-zoned property to the east. There is also a setback to the south, but because there's an easement or a lateral there, they're, they're essentially meeting that already. But there, as Mr. Hood stated, in City of Meridian, they're looking to see that roadway that goes through there. In addition, there's to-be landscaping along the eastern, northern, western property boundaries. But because of the variance, if you were to approve that, there would essentially be no landscaping along the eastern property line. It would just be the facility. There is a condition, if, if you do approve it, that we have in there, that there would be a, a wall along that eastern property line as opposed to landscaping.
How much are they requesting to encroach into the, or through their variance? How much are they?
Chairman Beck, Commissioner Davidson, they, they propose to build right on the property line, zero, zero feet.
As opposed to 200?
As opposed to 20. 20 feet is a setback.
20 feet. And that's on the, the, the west side and the east side?
Eastern property boundary, the, the, everywhere else they're sufficient and meet our, the Ada County setback requirements. As stated in ITD's letter, though, they have concern with the northern property boundary. They would like to see it look more like this, where there's a much larger setback for right-of-way dedication.
ITD wants to see that.
Correct.
And, but they submit, they, the applicant did submit revised plans for that?
Yeah, so this is what Planning and Zoning recommended approval on, this with the larger setback here to the north. The applicant, then after P&amp;Z's recommendation of approval, came forth with this site plan that has a much lesser setback, and ITD is opposed to that. Based on their most recent letter, it's Exhibit Number 49.
But you said the Planning and Zoning's approved a wider, a larger setback?
Correct. Planning and Zoning recommended approval on the large setback for the northern property line.
But then they adjusted it later?
And this, the applicant adjusted it, correct.
So, what we're looking at is not the approved Planning and Zoning process?
This is in front of you. Yeah, this is the approved, the applicant's now asking for something.
Different.
Different, correct.
I see. Okay.
Process allows applicants to change plans after P&amp;Z approval?
Commissioner Beck, or Chairman Beck, Commissioner Davidson, as long as it's within the scope and scale of the project, you know, there's room for movement of, you know, structures and so forth, as long as you ultimately approve it. That's where you come into play, so.
And once again, the variance is only applies to the east side?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Well, the variance request applies to the south side as well, is it not?
It's a 20-foot setback to the south and the east. So, because of the lateral there, they, they should be sufficient there on, on the south, but it's the east that they want to build right up on the property line. So, that's where they're requesting the variance.
Oh, only on the east, the variance is only on the east?
Because there's already a lateral that they can't build on anyway.
Correct.
And that's where the proposed road is to, is, is to be?
Ideally in that, somewhere in that area.
Okay, all right. Is there any other questions of Ms. Mueller? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, is there any other, any other, anybody else wish to testify for or against this property before we get for a rebuttal? I'll see.
Before you close, Chairman Beck, I'm going to enter in Mr. Hutter's letter that was read to us by Ms. Mueller as Exhibit Number 52.
Okay. Well, and we, we, we will allow the applicant to rebut anything if you'd like. You can go ahead and offer a rebuttal if you'd like.
Do you want me to put your presentation back up here?
You know, the slide I would love to see is the one that you had that had the Collector Road with the purple line. I think that would be, thank you. That would be the most helpful. Thank you. The current site plan as it sits reflects what county code setbacks are allowable on all three sides other than the eastern perimeter, just for clarity. We changed it because of that. Knowing ITD's information was still pending, we submitted what county will allow and sought relief on the eastern boundary. And I'll return to that in a moment. We are surrounded by very large landowners on all three sides, and of course, they want us to build roads for them. That makes a lot of sense. However, we're building the road that is required of us to allow connectivity to the south, the west, and the east. When applications come, the road buildout is required at that time. Oaihe Storm splits the difference between the purple line here where the Collector Road is proposed to be built along our western perimeter. Oaihe Storm is halfway between Highway 16 and the Collector Road there on the north-south purple line. There is a lot of opportunity for road to be built that will connect all of those parcels when the applications come. There are no applications currently at this time. I have coordinated with other developers on projects in the past. We'd be happy to address concerns. We had one app, one person come to our neighborhood meeting, and they're actually developer on the other side of the highway in Starr. He offered me a tour of his project. We offered to stay in touch with each other. He came and said, "What do you got going on?" I was standing out there in the, you know, 7:00 PM on a November night and made a friend. The comments regarding frontage of Highway 2026 are between us and ITD. At this point, they are still to be determined. We are definitely addressing those with our newly-assigned planner. We would be also happy to extend the olive branch to 5B Holdings and withdraw the variance request, recognize the impact to our neighbor should our rezone be approved. So, that site plan for, yes, please, thank you, on the eastern boundary, where we are seeking relief from the setback requirement from Ada County. That is the only variance we're requesting tonight. That's all I've got. Thank you for your time and attention to our application.
So, what you're suggesting is you would be happy to, if you got the, you would withdraw your, your request for, for variance?
On that eastern boundary, yes, sir.
Eastern boundary.
Yes, sir.
On the eastern boundary?
Yes, sir.
And, well, didn't you say that's the only, that's the only relief you're asking for?
That's the relief we've asked for. The southern boundary, the setback is in accounting for the V-ditch. There's a main, there's a V-ditch there that we can't come anywhere near, and that setback.
Because there's an easement, because it's a lateral.
It's organic.
You can't, you can't build over it or anything.
Correct.
And there couldn't even be a road build over it.
No, sir.
I don't get that, how that, I don't, I don't, okay, go ahead.
So, we have, I've chatted with my team, and certainly this is not the hill we would like to die on, on that eastern boundary. One thing I've learned in my short time on this planet is no ask, no get. So, most of the time, we, we get a yes, or we get a maybe, or we get a, eh, we'll give you half of that, and we come to some sort of resolution. I have not met with anyone from 5B Holdings, but certainly that isn't something that we would be willing to throw out the window if, if we were not to be approved based on that variance request. It's, it's just not something that is important enough to have our application denied based on that item. That would be the special treatment we asked for, and if it's not going to be allowed, then c'est la vie, we'll, we'll take it.
Does that eliminate the entire row of units on the eastern border?
Excuse me, Commissioner Davidson, what I would do tomorrow morning is give my engineer a call and say, "Okay, Chad, what's the, what's the look? Do we move the, we move the emergency access over a bit?" And he either takes those four rows on the interior and turns them into, to three larger ones, and, and he massages that for me. I, I certainly don't have the bandwidth for that type of thing. But he would come up with something that would meet that requirement as well as give us the emergency access that we need to, to comply with fire requirement.
And, and the Chindon road would be addressed as well, back to what you were saying, the state highway setback requirement?
Chairman Beck, Commissioner Daly, those are still to be determined. The ITD letter said this is what they think they're going to use, this is what they predict, and this is what they're projecting. At this point, it is still not a hard and fast number, but we will work with them to come up with a solution that makes sense, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other documents or issues that we need to submit for the record?
Believe we're good. Chairman Beck?
Okay, I will close the public hearing on this application. It is Application 202300225ZCDAVCUMSP, Urban Solution. That application is being, or that public hearing being closed, it's now in the hands of the Commission. Is there further discussion, or I think we've got kind of a complicated, not kind of, but really a complicated issue here?
How to make the motion?
And, well, not just that, but how, how to proceed, because we have an applicant that has changed the application.
That's my point.
From the, from the original Planning and Zoning approval, which means that the application has not been approved in its current form.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, for clarification, that the Ada County Planning and Zoning Commission has made a recommendation to you. Nothing has been specifically approved.
Oh, that's right. They've been made, well, they're a recommending body in any event.
Right.
They don't approve anything, recommend.
Yeah, there are applications that they do approve, conditional uses and master site plans. But in this case, with the variance, it's coming to you, also with the conference or the rezone as well. But yeah, they're making a recommendation. There was a specific plan that they, they reviewed. There is some variation, but, but it is within your purview to, to consider that reduced setback that's been proposed.
The applicant has withdrawn her, her request for variance on the east side of the, of the property, which further complicates it. There's some road issues that I don't think have been, have been fully addressed or have been agreed to by anybody.
As described, anyway.
As described, yeah. And so I'm wondering if this is even ripe for, for approval with all these outstanding issues. Can anybody?
Yeah. Chairman Commissioners, I mean, in the event, you know, confronted with things that are unknown and things that you want to figure out, I think you could move to table this to allow the applicant time to, to sort those things out and come back with an updated proposal that reflects kind of a final decision of ITD and a revised plan, absence of variance. I mean, those are certainly things that you could table this item for.
Well, that's what I'm leaning to. I don't know about my fellow commissioners, but I'm leaning towards something like that. I'd need a, I would need a, we would need a, a applicable or amenable date, because I don't know how long that will take, but we would need an, I mean, we'd need a sort of a date. I'm, I'm thinking minute, very minimum 30 days, maybe even 60 days.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I think you're right. I think 60 is probably a safer bet, considering how busy everyone is and agencies that are involved. And again, it's at your discretion to table it.
Exactly.
If you wanted to.
So, what would be, what would be the date if we, if we table it for 60 days, to the next public hearing, in 60 days?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the next public hearing that would fall within that criteria potentially could be October 11th?
Okay. And it would be this hearing as well, this, 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 and, and if there was any revised proposals that would come, come forth in that, at that time. All right. Well, I think that's a, that's a doable motion. What do you think?
I think that's appropriate in, in terms of the discussion myself.
What do you think, Commissioner?
Well, I mean, I, I think this does give the applicant a chance to submit a revised design, although I got to say, this, the design's not going to look much different from this. It's a bunch of, bunch of boxes. So, it's only going to. It's a bunch of, bunch of boxes, so it's only going to change the configuration a little bit, but I, I'm certainly inclined towards granting this upon seeing the, the amended design. I don't know if we're ever going to really get to the bottom of the issue, the connector roads on the, on the southern side, but yeah, if we, if we get a revised, or if we table for a revised design, I think that's fine.
Okay, we'll accept the motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table application 2023-00225-ZCDAV-MP-MSP until October 11th, you said?
Yeah.
For time to redesign it as pertinent to the discussions we've had tonight.
Well, and to work with the neighbors and so forth and the various agencies, I think would be appropriate. All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that. I suppose it gives some time for additional discussion about, you know, any, any architectural changes they may, might want to make on that, but, you know, as I, I see it, there, it's probably not as ugly as, as your neighbors would like you to think, but also the fact that, you know, they may not build for another decade or so, you're going to be sitting out there by yourself, but it, it does give you some time to work with the neighbors and see if you want to make any concessions, so.
Is that a second?
That's a second.
All right. All right, you've heard the, the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We now have up for consideration, I'll open the public hearing on application 2023-00644-SPR-HD-FP, James Wiley. Public hearing is open. We'll ask Connor if you can take the, oh, you're, you're all ready to go, Connor.
Ready to rock. Thank you, Chairman Beck. Let me get this up in front of you here. So application 2023-00644-S-FP-HD-PR is before you. This is more specifically considered Whiskey Ridge subdivision. Applicant is James Wiley. Before I start here, Elias is going to hand you some exhibits that were actually received today by Eagle Fire, just as some follow-up. These are going to be exhibit number, let me get a exhibit number for you, one second. Exhibit number 58, want to add that to the record. So the applicant on this application is James Wiley. Vicinity map here, this property is just north of Shadow Valley Golf Course, it's east of, of Highway 55 in the, in the foothills there. Here's a, an aerial for the property. So this is a preliminary plat and a private road extension, as well as a floodplain and hillside development review to create Whiskey Ridge subdivision. Subdivision will consist of seven 40-plus acre lots. Property is located off North Basin Way, which is the property, or the road that goes up here and turns into North Basin Lane. There's also North Broken Horn Road to the east, which is not an ACHD public roadway. This property is within the Rural Preservation District and currently contains 286 acres. Here's the, the subdivision plat, preliminary plat. So as I stated, there's going to be seven buildable lots, each will have at least 40 acres. North Basin Lane, as I mentioned before, here's North Basin Lane, comes up at currently, terminates within the property. It will be extended throughout the site, and that is why you have the, the private road application in front of you. Each lot will have the frontage and access onto, onto North Basin Lane there. As I mentioned, there's a hillside development proposal for this. As you can see, there's significant contours, has some pretty steep slopes out here. Any slopes that are greater than 15% require that hillside development review, so that's why that's in front of you. And in addition, there's that floodplain application, and that's just because there is going to be development taking place in foothill tributary areas. An application was previously submitted back in 2022 for this same development, but it was withdrawn as it was determined that further soil and slope stability testing was required throughout the site. There was some drilling that took place in various testing sites, and it was determined by the soils engineer and our county engineer that development can take place safely with adherence to the engineering standards that are conditioned in the proposed findings in front of you. The lots will be serviced by Veolia Water, there's going to be a line that runs to the property, and there will be individual septic systems on each of those lots. The subdivision does comply with Chapter 8-6 of the Ada County Code, since the proposed lots comply with the dimensional standards for the RP districts. There will be a, a phased approach to this project, there's going to be two phases. Phase one will entail the western half, as you, here's the phase line, and then the eastern half would be in phase two. This is the, the Ada County Future Land Use Map. It defines the site or designates the area as rangeland. This is adopted, which is primarily intended for seasonal grazing by domestic livestock, wild animals. Property is also zoned as rural preservation, which allows for the creation of those 40-acre residential lots as proposed. This will continue to allow for potential grazing due to their large size and other similarly sized residential lots, but the property to the south and west, with larger parcels to the north and east, the proposed subdivision will be compatible with this future land use map and the comprehensive plan. Some agency comments here. ACHD is requiring that Basin Way here, and it's kind of convoluted, so bear with me, but Basin Way is a public roadway that runs all the way up. It actually kind of deadends here as the public roadway, and then you have the private roadway that continues into Mr. Wiley's property. This is existing today, so the highway district wants to see that this blue portion here that's very skinny, it's only about 13 feet wide, the highway district would like to see that widened, so they're, they're public roadway, as well as the private roadway that would go into the site. So that's one of their main comments. They also mentioned modifying the turnaround, that's part of their review. And then we have Eagle Fire, I've provided you their most recent exhibit, they're fine with the approved plans as provided. And then lastly, here we have county engineer, and Zach Kirk, our county engineer, is here tonight. If you have questions for him, he's going to require that there's a drainage application submitted. There will be, you know, as, if it is approved, there would be inspections throughout the development process as that road is constructed to ensure that there's no significant impacts onto the neighbors and neighboring properties. So those are kind of the main key agency comments before you. We do have some neighbor concerns. Some of the surrounding neighbors have concerns with slope stabilization and landslides, the road maintenance of that private roadway, just additional traffic as you have this property being split and, and new property owners, concerns with drainage and runoff, and then emergency access to the site. So there's a few different letters in your report as, you know, different exhibits in there that are before you, if you have any, you know, need any further clarification on those, but there are some members in the public here that will provide testimony tonight. Staff is recommending approval of the application, and your Planning and Zoning Commission also is recommending approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions, Connor?
Not at the moment.
Okay, no question. Thank you. Okay, is Mr. Wiley in? Good evening.
Good evening. James Wiley, 1676 North Clarendon Way, Eagle, Idaho. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, obviously Connor's done a great job in presenting. We're, we're applying for seven-lot subdivision, only seven lots on 286 acres. And so for this presentation, we've done innumerable soils engineering and evaluations. Mr. Kirk has required us to do some additional soils testing, which we did perform, and the concern of slope stability is our concern as well, because I intend to build my house up there, and I don't want to have a problem. My two children intend to build their houses up there, they don't want to have a problem, so we want to make sure that this is done properly, and we're also in the construction trades, we're somewhat familiar with how to, how to do things and what the ramifications are if they're not done right. So it's our intention to do everything we can to make sure that this project is, is done well, and, and hopefully, everybody will be happy with it in the end. I'll stand for any questions, if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Any questions? You have any question? All right. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Abigail Germaine. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, Abby Germaine with Elam and Burke, 251 East Front Street, Boise, Idaho. I'm here on behalf of my client, Jereen Phillips. She is an adjacent property owner to this subdivision. If you look at the map that's before you, yep, exactly, thank you, Connor, she's located right there off of Basin Lane. The main concern for my client is that, as you'll see, that red portion of Basin Lane is a private road currently. It is an easement that my client has, Jereen Phillips, to access her property. So over the course of the last 30 years, she has been the only person that's used that access. She has made significant investments in that road to the, the tune of about $70,000. She's paved it, she's maintained it. Her concern is just ensuring that that road is properly taken care of once it's being used by the additional property owners up there. I would note that the staff's conditions of approval, condition number four, does propose that a road maintenance agreement be recorded. However, the road, the language in the condition does not require that that road maintenance agreement is agreed to by the adjacent property owners, and specifically my client, who's made that investment and maintained that road. So she would ask that the, the commission condition the property, or, and this is a project, in, in a way that would allow for negotiation and agreement on how that road maintenance will work going into the future, in order to ensure that her investment is protected. We would also ask that that road maintenance agreement be executed prior to condition number 27 in staff report, in the staff's report. That's the time in which the drainage plan will need to be submitted. That way, we can coincide with the road maintenance and the drainage plan. Additionally, I would just note for the commission that there has been some damage to that Basin Lane already, just in doing some of the testing and investigation of the site. It's my understanding that Mr. Wiley has agreed to take care of that, and, and my client certainly appreciates that. We would just ask the commission to consider requiring some kind of bond or surety as it relates to construction of that road. Hopefully, the project goes forward and is developed as indicated, but in the event that the project doesn't develop or that there's damage to the road, she would like some kind of assurance that if the applicant is not there to correct the problem, that there's a bond or surety there. I believe that condition number 29 says that a surety may be provided, but it does not require that. So those are most of my client's concerns with this project. I would note for the commission that we did submit formal comments on June 8th, those were provided prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and we would refer the commission to those comments as they do go a little bit more in-depth with some of the issues with this development. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Go ahead.
My question is, she maintained that road, it's a private road, is it her private road?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, so she has an easement to that. So Mr. Wiley owns that in fee title, but it is her easement that she takes access off of Basin Lane. So she has been the only other person using that lane, and that's why she paved it and maintained it for all those years.
Under an easement agreement?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it a perpetual easement?
Yes, yes it is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there any conditions on the, on the easement? Is there any conditions that she maintained the road, or that the owners of the property maintained the road?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so I believe that there is no specific conditions in the easement itself, but there was a maintenance agreement that my client, Ms. Phillips, and the prior owner before Mr. Wiley purchased the property, that they entered into that just said that Ms. Phillips could actually improve the easement area by paving it and making investments in it, so she could have proper access up there. So it didn't require that any maintenance be done, it just allowed her to improve the area.
So you're wanting a supplemental maintenance agreement?
So they, Mr. Chairman, they are required to provide a road maintenance agreement per the conditions of staff, however, there's nothing in the current language in the condition that would require agreement as to what the substance and, and terms of that road maintenance agreement would be. And my client just wants to make sure that she has a seat at the table in order to ensure that Mr. Wiley pays for a proportionate share of that maintenance, that there are other terms and conditions that would protect her interest in that road going forward.
Okay. Any other questions?
I mean, do you have any proposed language or a proposed agreement, or how, how can we, if we were amenable to resolving this tonight, how would we do that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, so I have been working with the county's engineer, Mr. Kirk, about this issue. I believe that the discussion that we had resulted in, if the condition, condition number four were to be amended to say that the applicant will work with adjacent property owners, specifically Ms. Phillips, to come to the terms and conditions of the road maintenance agreement before recording that agreement, that would be satisfactory to my client.
And then the issue of a, a bond, or any bond?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, yes, again, I, I believe that the condition alludes to the fact that they may require that, but it doesn't specifically say that the bond will be provided. I don't know if it's, if the county intends to require a certain percentage on the bond or not.
Do you want me, do you want me to answer that? Chairman Beck, Commissioner Davidson, so the, the language that she's referring to, it's in condition number, oh, you already, I already lost it.
29, I believe.
29, yes, so what that's getting at is talking about, as Mr. Wiley, if he is approved, develops the property, in, in lieu of actually constructing the roadway, he can choose to submit a surety bond to the county and will hold on to his money until he's able to actually construct the roadway, and that will allow for approval, but that bond needs to be released at some point for him to actually construct the roadway, and there's, I don't know, some more in-depth into the percentages, I don't know if Leon and Richard, you want to go into that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'll both weigh in here. You know, the thought is, with that surety agreement, typically, it's, it's almost an option. It's nothing that we would specifically require for damages or things that have been alluded to, it'd be an option for the developer to give them some flexibility to either build a road, to satisfy conditions of approval, or post a surety to satisfy the condition of approval, to enable them to move forward, but nothing that we would typically require a percentage or anything of that.
Yeah, and Chairman Commissioners, to that effect, also, in unique situations on hillside projects, he would need to likely construct the road in order to actually gain access to the building paths, and also to allow emergency services into the area, so we have seen sureties used to record a final plat, and then they come build it, you know, once they're ready to start building the homes, but I would say on something like this, it's almost assured he's going to have to construct this road in order to actually get to the, the site and allow emergency services, fire department in particular, up to the area to, to serve those. They, you know, often fire departments don't, won't allow a building permit, or will ask building permits to not move forward until they can access the actual site where the building's going to be occurring. So also that, all that to say, I think it's, the attorney's interests are covered in that regard, but I certainly, I think our road user maintenance agreement actually also could accommodate another party to be on that agreement and to, to give them a chance to discuss this if you so wanted to condition that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Has there been any indication that your client, Mr. Wiley, aren't going to have a positive collaborative relationship on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, no. I think their interactions have been amicable, and, and my client certainly understands that development... development is inevitable. She just really wants to make sure that maintenance and operation is completely outlined in that road maintenance agreement, and that the burden of taking care of it into the future is not on her shoulders.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, we have Gary and Carleen Warford. Both of you asked to speak, are you still here?
That's from a different, that's from an earlier.
This is James Wiley here.
No, well, I'm Randy Hurst. I was on the.
Yeah, your name's on here. Go ahead, come on up then, Randy.
I'm Randy Hurst at 16089 North Basin Way. Given the staff recommendations and what I think is going to happen, we're expecting the approval, there's just a couple of things that we're hoping can be taken into account and maybe conditioned. One would be that the rural preservation district in the current setup is that there's a 40-acre minimum. I'm hoping and asking that that 40-acre minimum be specified in perpetuity or for as long as possible, so that these large lots can stay open country as they are. My understanding is that there can be the possibility sometimes of an owner splitting their property and breaking it up, and I'm hoping that if it's a 40-acre minimum for many years, the people who buy and understand that that 40-acre minimum is there, they'll know that that's what they've got and won't be trying to develop further. Also, given what's happened in other parts of the community where there's been landslides, this area is very kind of unstable, and hopefully with Mr. Kirk and the soils engineers that Mr. Wiley is working with, there will be regular assessment, because the road that the temporary that was put in for all the soil testing isn't the road that you see the map for. So there needs to be regular assessment to see that everything is going to be stable. I'm speaking partly for the people that live right below it and are very concerned and have written to you about their concerns about failure of the slope and runoff and things like that. I think the extensive engineering summary does a good job if they're regularly involved, and hope that that's a condition of the approval. The maintenance agreement for the road, right now, the way the application reads, is it's going to be the group of owners up at Whiskey Ridge that meets at least once a year. It doesn't include Mrs. Phillips. And so I think what I would ask for is that there's a set up minimum standards for what that agreement would be, so that then, if there isn't an issue of the group making a decision that could be harmful when she's not even included. Are there things, oh, Mr. Wiley had said at the last meeting, if I remember correctly, that the highway department is asking, saying that he has to make the improvements down to Stack Rock, that interchange with, yeah, with Stack Rock Road. But the map here doesn't show that, and so that's one of the questions, where does this improvement of this road? Because right now, he's got a nice big 24-foot road that's going to choke off at Brenda Lawson's house down to Stack Rock. It isn't going to be the full width. Now, if he's going to continue all the way down, that's great. That's what he said, but that's not what's in the application, and it's not what's on the map. So I'm hoping that the commissioners will say that that improvement needs to go all the way down to the Stack Rock interchange, and that any wells or utilities, changes that have to be done would be borne by the developer. With that, if you have any questions.
All right, any questions?
No questions, but maybe just to address one of your points, I don't think that a board can tie up land in perpetuity, because I think, I mean, we could, we have our zoning designations, that's what they are, but we, I think legally, we can't say subsequent boards elected in the future can't change it. And even if we did say it, they could change it anyway. So I think there's always, no matter what you do in land planning, no matter how much certainty you want, you can never be 100% certain, because you never know what another board in the future will do. At least, that's my legal understanding. Does our staff concur with that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, in this case, you know, I will add, the subject property is outside of any city's impact area. It would be quite some time, or I guess it would require a city to negotiate with the county to incorporate this into their impact area, to really lend the credibility, the potential for a rezone. I know the City of Eagle did just annex some property that's very close. So like you say, the City of Eagle could come in regardless of the action tonight and annex property and exercise their jurisdiction, but there is potential for properties here to remain as is for quite some time, given the fact that there is no impact area.
That's assuming no subsequently elected board elects to change it.
Correct, yes.
So.
Just asking for as long as possible.
Sure. Okay. All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, it appears that Gary and Carleen Warford did speak earlier, but they signed up for this application, so we won't need to hear from them. I think that if Mr. Wiley, if you'd like to rebut anything, you're welcome to do that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, sorry about that. I got bit by a dog the other day, and it's, it got infected. Regarding Ms. Phillips and the easement that she has through our property, she currently has a driveway approximately 13 to 14 feet wide. We're going to widen that to 24 or 26, you remember, four? Yeah, to 24 feet, and take care of any damage that might occur to that existing roadway while we're widening that. And I'd be happy to meet with her to come to some agreement on road maintenance. Basically, it's her and then the seven new lots. So I would think that it should be very easy for us to come to some sort of a resolution on a road maintenance agreement that includes her and all her input. I know that she does not like spraying along the sides of the road, and we don't have any problem with that. We'd be happy to mow instead of spray or whatever needs to be done. And then I did not ever say that we would improve all the way to Stack Rock. We would improve Basin to the requirements by ACHD. The Basin Way is, as it comes out of our property, is narrow, and then it widens part of the way to Stack Rock. And I don't know exactly where it's widening to the 24 feet, but that's essentially what ACHD wants us to improve, is where it's widened to their standard. We pick it up and widen the driveway width to the north up the hill. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
All right, is there any other questions?
Just for staff and the county engineer, so kind of after the hearing from the attorney, what are the discussions about a revised road maintenance agreement? Where, what's the overall picture on that?
Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, we talked about seeing that road maintenance agreement and making sure that the neighbor is in agreement with the conditions as a condition of the drainage application. So while I'm reviewing the drainage application, I would look at that road maintenance agreement and make sure everything's in order.
I mean, I think the neighbor should have collaboration. I don't know if I'd want to structure this as like she could have veto power over the whole thing, but how, I mean, how do you see the interplay on that? I mean, if she says no.
Does the application currently require the county approve the maintenance agreement?
There's the commissioner right there.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the code specifically indicates that the applicant needs to provide us with documentation of a contract, an agreement that establishes the party or parties responsible for the repair and maintenance of the private road. And that's more or less all that the requirements state, and it needs to identify the regulations on how it's funded. So those are the kind of the aspects, the minimum aspects that we would be looking for in an agreement. You know, if the applicant's willing to include the neighbor and property owner in discussions, something that we can certainly consider adding a condition of approval or as a component of the drainage plan, but that's what the minimum the code requires.
Okay. All right. Well, I agree with Commissioner Davidson. I don't think we ought to have a veto on things, but we certainly ought to have some collaboration. So.
And depending on who the property owner is in the future, too.
Right.
Both sides.
So, all right, is there any other, anything else for us?
And for any questions?
All right, any more questions for the applicant?
No, but I appreciate your good faith, and at the end of the day, if, you know, neighbors can work together, it saves everybody a lot of trouble, so.
A lot easier.
Yep, yeah. All right, well.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have the Eagle Fire Department's letter on the record?
Commissioner Beck, I do. I believe it is exhibit number 58.
All right, yeah, because, well, it's dated today.
Correct, yep, yep. That's why I got it in front of you.
All right. Okay, if there's no other.
Just to clarify for staff, are we talking about slightly amending the roadside maintenance agreement condition, to change any language, or do we have that covered?
Chairman Beck, Commissioner Davidson, I mean, you can change the language if you'd like, as county engineer stated. There's also a drainage plan, but he can place additional conditions on that, too. I don't know if you want to add anything else.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, it might, you know, it might make the record clear if you were leaning in that direction to add some kind of language, maybe to that maintenance agreement section. I think there was even some language offered up, that the applicant work with the neighbor and property owner, come up with amenable terms. So there could be some language like that that you could add, that could be a little clearer than just relying on something coming up with the drainage.
All right, so, well, before we proceed to there, I should close the public hearing, and then we can determine the direction that this board will take. So with that, I will close the public hearing on application 202300644 SPRHDFP, James Wiley. The hearing being closed, and the application is before the board, it does seem like there would be a benefit of adding an additional clarification on the road maintenance agreement. And then we could actually proceed with the notion that this would be approved with that additional change. Is that correct? Is that, is that how the board feels? Is that how the board feels? All right. So, and we could do this at our, at an open business meeting, could we not?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so give us a date.
Twenty-second, maybe?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, August 22nd is an option.
Okay, all right. Well, with that in mind, I will accept a motion to table this application until the August 28th with simply to revise the road maintenance agreement language.
Twenty-second, I believe.
Twenty-second, excuse me. Twenty-second, August 22nd, with the idea that there would be a revision on that road maintenance agreement to work with the cooperating with the neighbors. I don't think we should give the neighbor a veto power, but we should certainly say work with the neighbors.
So clarification, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, you have no desire to take specific action tonight, whether approve or deny, you want to table to see that language before you take action on the application?
Well, you tell me.
I mean, I'm comfortable saying I, we could move to approve this upon getting the new language on the road maintenance agreement, which would require collaboration but not approval by the neighbor.
Well, that'd be fine, too, if we could do that. I don't know if we can do that.
Well, we would do it the normal way, just approve it and table it for the new findings affecting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you, I believe if you direct us with language that you'd like added, we can add that and present it to you with the, if there's any revised findings, I think it may more or less be a revised condition.
Condition, revised condition, yeah, not findings, but a revised condition. Correct.
Table it, table it and not approve it, but table it.
Deal it till August 22nd, open business meeting with revised conditions. Does that sound reasonable to you, with the notion of it being approved on the 22nd?
I think we can get there, Mr. Chairman.
Right, all right. Well, then I accept the motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we table application number 2020230064-S-FP-HD-PR till August 22nd to have presented to us new finding, the fact, conclusions of the law and conditions.
Relating to?
Relating to the right away.
Road maintenance agreement.
Road maintenance agreement, I mean.
Okay, is that clear enough?
I think so, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll need a second then.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is to approve the application with the, to untable it until the 22nd of August with some revised conditions attached.
Mr. Chairman, Annie?
I'm sorry, was the motion just to table the entire?
No.
That's what I heard it.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
There's no approval tonight.
No, we'll do the final approval on the 22nd. Okay, is it clear, Annie? All right, we're good then. All right.
Do I second, you'll second?
Yeah, okay, we got the motion, we got the second. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, is there anything else needs to be brought before this board tonight?
Mr. Chairman, one other item, for the good of the order, we'll mention that it is Leon's birthday today. So he's got to celebrate his birthday with you tonight, so.
Way to go.
Birthday I've had in a long time, really appreciate it.
Well, that's, that's good. You don't even look 30 yet.
Oh, gosh, you're too kind.
I'll make a motion for the board to wish Leon a happy birthday.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want us to sing a song to you?
Okay, I'm already blushing enough, so.
Okay, we'll be in recess.